You all ready? The call to the order of the October ninth meeting of the Butler County Board of Commissioners. Would you please rise for a moment and child prayer for all of the pledged believers? Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free public protest stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask all speakers to state their name and their municipality of residence. We will be given three minutes to speak. First on the list is Peggy Abersold.
Peggy Abersold, the membership of the Orange Commissioners. Just had a few announcements. This week, the week of October fourteenth to the eighteenth of two thousand and thirteen, is known as the Week of Caren. The United Way of Butler County and the Rotary Club of Butler are looking for volunteers. They're wanting to mobilize hundreds of individuals and businesses in the Butler County region to complete hands-on projects, as well as to get a firsthand look at services provided by nonprofit agencies, parks, and recreational facilities. Last year's event brought together two hundred and forty volunteers to complete various projects for eleven nonprofit agencies and parks throughout Butler County. This saved the community more than thirty-one thousand dollars in labor. Choose a project from our project list, volunteer, a team, or as an individual. If you're interested, please contact Kathleen Tremay at seven-two-four-two-eight-five-four-eight-eight-three at extension two-two-three. It's not too late to volunteer. Second announcement, there will be an unwanted medications collection on October the twenty-sixth from ten a.m. to two p.m. Locations will be the Butler State Police Barracks, the Cranberry Township Police Department, the Saxeburn Police Department, and the Grove City Police Department in the Prescription Express at one-eleven Mill Street. Third announcement, it's hard to believe that the month of October is here and the side of pumpkins reminds you that Halloween is just around the corner. With the theme of Halloween comes Fun Activity at Pumpkin Garden. Many local farms around Butler County are holding fall festivities, which include hayrides and other family activities. October is a great month to visit and support local farms and Butler County agriculture. It's also a great way to enjoy fresh fall produce while boosting Butler County's local economy. My last announcement is for individuals in the educational system. Middle school teachers, administrators, and building managers. The DEP announces the Regional Keystone Energy Education Program Workshop in Sandy Lake, known as KEEP, K-E-E-P for short. The Department of Environmental Protection invites middle school teachers, administrators, and building managers to a Tuesday, October twenty-ninth training workshop in Sandy Lake, Mercer County, for the KEEP project. The workshop will be from eight-thirty to four p.m. at the Keever Center in Sandy Lake. KEEP is geared to middle school building teams, which includes three teachers, grades five, six, or seven, an administrator, and a building maintenance manager. Workshop participants will learn about and explore energy issues, including fundamentals and impacts of electricity generation, transportation fuels, careers, energy conservation, and student teams, and school building, energy benchmarking through presentations, tours, and hand line activities. Participating teachers will also be eligible for seven act forty-eight credit hours. Space is limited. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Next, Terry Penroy.
Terry Penroy, Butler Township. First of all, I want to say good morning to you guys.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity. I come to you today not only as an employee of Sunnyview, but also as a husband, a father, and a taxpayer of the County of Butler. I'd like to start off by saying thank you for this opportunity to address you and for the opportunity to try to keep Sunnyview a county-owned town. I want to start off by pointing out that in the year two thousand and thirteen, the county budget was two hundred million dollars. Of that two hundred million dollars, Sunnyview was due to receive nineteen million. Of that nineteen million, roughly eighteen point two will be recovered with reimbursements. That leaves an approximate shortfall of eight hundred thousand dollars, which costs the taxpayers a half a penny per dollar of their taxes. A half a penny. That is not a burden to the taxpayers. Sunnyview employs approximately two hundred and fifty-five employees, houses approximately two hundred and twenty residents, and we have a waiting list of ten to twenty residents daily. Sunnyview employees work very hard and are proud of their jobs. Sunnyview is always a thorn until it is needed. In two thousand and nine, on a personal note, my mother-in-law was diagnosed with Creutzfeldt-Jakob disease. After being in several private facilities, which could not provide the care necessary for her, we took her to Sunnyview, which welcomed her with open arms. We at Sunnyview appreciate the opportunity we have to be county employees and are very fortunate that you, the Commissioners, have given us the opportunity to work on our contract together to help stabilize the shortfalls of the healthcare system. If this current contract does not pass, I hope that we can sit down and work out our issues together, and if a solution is reached, I hope this will end the fears of Sunnyview being sold. I hope that we can continue to provide quality care to our residents because they are the reason that we do what we do: quality jobs and quality care. Thank you.
I'd like to say this, I'd really thank you for coming, and I concur with ninety-eight percent of what you said, and maybe I did something, I didn't want to make it a hundred, but I really appreciate you coming, and you did a great job. Thank you.
Catherine Kirkland.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak.
There you go, there you go.
Anyway, I said good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming.
Good morning.
Thanks for this. I'll go through. I certainly do enjoy living in Sunnyview, and I've spoken to both staff and residents about the sale of the place. No one is in favor. I have a good friend who sits in the lobby and greets and says goodbye to incoming and outgoing visitors, and no one wants to see Sunnyview sold. We need to have stability in our lives and our golden years, and Sunnyview provides us with that. I'm very, very proud of some things in the home, like especially the activities apart, the one-on-one visits, that if people are put in by their families, I feel like they're just been abandoned and left to die. Activities apart, I go in, talk with them, read to them whatever they'd like to do, so they still feel like they're worthwhile human beings. Anyway. I thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. I hope you have a good day now.
Thank you for coming down.
Yeah. Kathleen, can I ask you one question? How long have you lived in Sunnyview?
Well, this time I'm in long-term care, and I came in January zero-eight, but I've had multiple short stays in the past, too. I've been at two other nursing homes in this area. I'm definitely Sunnyview's veteran's there, being that a lay-sout.
That's wonderful, so currently you've been there five years for your last day?
Yeah.
Second question. Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming today and sharing your thoughts.
You're most welcome.
Yep.
Yes, we have petitions here, signed by a lot of people, stating they do not wish to sell Sunnyview sold. If you remember before, when it was talked of a sale, we had a group that provided to commiserate several thousand signatures that do not sell, and people are feeling the same way now.
Okay.
Only to come to this.
Yeah. Only have less far.
Yeah, thanks a lot, okay? Good seeing you here.
Thank you.
Minister Mark Kurnisky.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hi, Mark.
Chilly, chilly, chilly morning, now, what we kind of used to lately. Um, I just want to talk about some of the government's, government's support for private businesses. What I'm thinking about is BBG, it's come to Cranberry, and I think it's great to come to Cranberry, don't get me wrong, but it's four million, almost four million that they got from the state. Now, I realize half of that's a loan that has to be repaid. I don't think we need to be paying companies money to relocate to Cranberry. I realize none of you had anything to do with that, but I still don't think it's a good idea. It's like we're up to almost five and a half million for the Marriott in the city. Again, I don't think that's a great idea. I'm worried it's going to raise my taxes in the city, quite honestly. I know, that's about it. I know I've talked about selling Sunnyview in the past, and I said if you guys come to agreement, the last meeting with the, with the, with the union, that doesn't lose money, I was great with that, too, so. Okay, hey, see you guys later. I might see you.
Hey, thanks, relax, Mark.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Let's move on then. We got minutes for our September twenty-third agenda setting meeting and our September twenty-fifth public meeting. Is there a motion to approve those in print? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? I will second it. Is there discussion? Jim?
I'd like to speak on that. I made a mistake earlier, I apologize, I said I'm going along with us. I'd like to read the first part here, Commissioner.
Wait, wait.
Reports, reports. Oh, I'm sorry, Wednesday meeting, third.
Wednesday meeting?
Yeah, that one.
All right.
Wednesday's meeting of the reports section. I think it's on the last page.
Okay.
Okay, the first part. Commissioner Eckstein spoke about the article in the Butler Eagle, several county employees, the Tribune and Youth Agency, con cards, an issue involving lifeguards at Alameda Pole, Judge Edgar, Chairman of the Carrier. Now, if anybody could say what I, read these minutes and say what I said out of that line, I don't think you can. With all due respect to the person that wrote them, I think we have an obligation to be, to be open with the public and have it, have the minutes so that you can read what happened. Judy Snyder, Jim Kennedy's long-term secretary, did that extensively, and she did a great job at it, and I really respect her. I don't think these are accurate. It's not what happened at the meeting. It covers up what happened at the meeting, and if we can't do this, maybe we should see, if we can't accurately portray what people come up and say, or even Commissioners, maybe we should keep, we're out, we ought to get out of the Stone Ages and maybe do it, record the meetings. I'll record a meeting right now digitally. Maybe we can keep digital records, because these are not accurate at all, is what's going on at the meeting, okay? Now, I'd like to change these, but my guess is I shouldn't waste too much time on it, because you guys want to keep it undercover as much as you can. That would be my guess. But these do not, I've read it, they do not accurately portray what I stated, not in the least, okay? So, I guess I made my comment, you guys can do whatever you want. I'd like to change them to reflect what happened, but it's not going to happen, that's my main opinion.
Well, the minutes are accurate, they're just not all inclusive of everything that was said, and I think we discussed that at one time. If we put everything in there, there's no point in it, because most of the things that are said are just not really pertinent to government business.
Well, Judy Snyder didn't do that.
Well, Judy Snyder did an excellent job, she was a real respected employee, and she did a totally opposite of what's going on now, okay? Well, we can, we can discuss that among ourselves in the meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
It's approved. All business.
There is none today. We do have one proclamation. Butler County Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October two thousand and thirteen. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over four million Americans each year, and whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate that's higher than the national average, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions in dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore be it resolved that the Butler County Commissioners proclaim October two thousand and thirteen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Butler County, and urge our citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Signed, Butler County Board of Commissioners, William L. Carrier, Chairman, Adele Pinkerton, Vice Chairman, James Eckstein, Secretary. And here to accept proclamation is Roxanne Gillowen and other representatives from the Victims Outreach Intervention Center, or VOICE.
Roxanne?
Hi, Roxanne.
I just want to take this moment.
Thank you for all that you. Come up to the microphone. If you'd like to say something. Please move, pardon.
I want to take this moment to thank you from our entire, the Victims Outreach Intervention Center, for recognizing the importance of domestic violence in our community, and that it's something that not just individuals in the community need to support, but everybody, all of the residents of Butler County and beyond, at our state level and national level. So, thank you for recognizing this and supporting us and helping to fight this, fight against domestic violence.
Thank you very much, too.
Under new business, John Campbell has asked to have his agenda item moved up.
Sorry, Mike.
So, John Campbell, this is the item that was under Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
They're asking approval of a contract with PA Gas Motors in the oil city for the purchase of a natural gas for the county of Butler. The price this year would be inclusive for the transfer, for the purchase, that would be four dollars, fourteen and a half cents per MFC, over a thousand cubic feet.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I would like to commend John, I sat there with John and the gentleman from the gas company. John did all the talking, I just sat there and listened to John feeding this guy up, and he gone down four more cents than it was Monday, so you did great, John, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Next, under Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Mike Smith.
Good morning.
We lost weight.
Yes.
I can tell, I didn't see you.
And I was, because you were a gentleman. We'll take both. I'd like to thank the Security Policy Committee and Human Resource Director Lori Altman for helping us get to the point where we are today to ask for your approval for a one-year onsite CD eight-hundred duplex printer maintenance contract for five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and a software maintenance agreement that includes all technical support and future upgrades for three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for a total of nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Good job.
Mike, the shields are two weeks, or, I'm sorry, the shields are two weeks, or, the shields? Yeah. I, for the.
The new bands.
Oh, we'll be ordering them, we hope to implement them for the MPU.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay.
The next item, under Emergency Services, Steve Vice House has asked me to present this on his behalf. His behalf, we're asking for your approval of the two thousand and thirteen Emergency Management Performance Grant. This is the grant that pays for one-half of two physicians in emergency services. The total award is eighty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, and we have already received funding for three-quarters of this grant. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion to approve receiving this grant? I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Next, under Prison, we're asking for your approval of an agreement between the County of Butler and the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections and the Pennsylvania Board of Probation and Parole to house technical parole by holders at the Butler County Prison at the recommendation of prison board, and this would be a per diem rate of seventy dollars per inmate per day.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Next, under Human Services, Area Agency on Aging, Beth Harold.
Good morning.
Good morning, Beth.
I'm requesting the Board's approval to renew a contract with Cambridge Home Healthcare, a provider that serves older adults and young services through the county and community-based service programs. The term of contract is July first, two thousand and thirteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. There are no county funds involved, and payment is made out of the agent block grant and lottery money.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Next item, under Planning, Dave Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Dave.
You should figure that aren't you going to ask me if I lost weight?
That's pretty obvious, Dave.
I'm just glad I'm there to talk.
Everybody hides behind their pulvers, so we don't hear it.
This morning, I have a request to go into a resolution approval for funding in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-one dollars that we're applying for, to the Department of Community Economic Development to update the county comprehensive plan. The last time the plan was updated was in two thousand and two, and under the municipal planning code, they require a request that you do it every ten years. In this case, we would be putting forth fifteen thousand in county funds and thirteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty in income. I know that that's ten dollars over, but this is just a show of support that we're going in excess of the fifty percent match required.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Question, Dave, if we don't do this, then we are subject to losing funding, is that correct?
Not, not necessarily, but they strongly support the counties updating their comprehensive plan every ten years, just to bring it into compliance with state requirements, and they don't, they don't withhold the funding, but it's a good idea to do it, because if you don't think, they don't complain with this plan.
Okay.
And it's been ten years, and there's been a lot of changes in the county in that ten years, I think it would be a good process to operate.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we've dealt with the last item at the beginning of new business, so that's all through business.
Okay, a motion to approve the budgetary transfer, please. Is there a second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Approval of new hires, is there a motion to no?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. A motion to approve the travel request.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the requisitions?
No move.
Is there a second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. A motion to approve the check, register, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Thank you. Report, Jim?
Yes. Thanks, Bill. Okay, report today. I'd like to, I wrote the comment about an editorial today in the Butler Eagle, written on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen. The Butler Eagle editorial titled Eckstein's Idea of Reform: Name, Call, and Harassment. I'd like to say, this little lopsided gem was written by a new employee. Luckily, he came today, so I don't have to talk behind him, he's here. Luckily, this little lopsided gem was written by new employee Tom Harrison. Tom is new to Butler County, and it seems to me that he's vying for the Brown Nozer of the Year Award at Butler Eagle to keep his new job. Reading this uninformed political rhetoric makes me long for the former editorial writer, Joe Gaspizik. Gaspizik's editorials were always a solid grade of B, and at least he tried to be objective. Harrison knows where his bread is buttered, and the cow ties to every whim of his boss, Butler Eagle General Manager Ron Bonecker. The first quote by Mr. Harrison, "This week Eckstein brought politics to an all-time new low with his childish retorts during a Commissioners' meeting." Wow, I would have thought Mike Vion, Elliot Spitzer, and Richard Nixon would have beaten me in the all-time lowest public official award. The second quote used in the editorial reads, "In something resembling a kindergarten class, Eckstein accused the other Commissioners of being lower than pond scum." What Harrison neglected to say in his article was that Bill McCarrer was spreading the rumor that obviously harassing young male lifeguards that work at Alameda Pole. "My next-door neighbor works at the Alameda Pole, and I'm team parent for my son's indoor soccer team. Anyone that would make such slanderous allegations without any proof is lower than pond scum." The editorial was written out of context. Mr. Harrison just happened to leave my lifeguard analogy out of his article. Really, was that an accident? The third quote used by Mr. Harrison reads, "At issue was yet another complaint of workplace harassment by a young female county employee." Wrong again. "I've never been accused of harassment in this county. The proper term is gender-based discrimination. In this article, I was turned into another Anthony Weiner. There is no harassment, no charges of harassment were ever made against me. Furthermore, there is no discrimination, no proof of it, none. In America, we are innocent until proven guilty or have the other two politicians beside me, and the Butler Eagle changed the rules. I'm innocent." Fourth quote by Mr. Harrison, "That makes four formal complaints, including defamation complaint against Eckstein in two years. Mr. Harrison neglects to tell the readers that Dale Pinkerton stated last year he is suing me to retaliate for perceived mistreatment over the last five years, which is illegal under the law, but this jam continues, and is using a county subcontractor, Doug Lynn, to do it. Would that be a conflict of interest in the public eyes? It sure as hell is a conflict of interest to me." Okay? Fifth quote, Eckstein from Mr. Harris, "Eckstein shows no willingness to work with the other Commissioners or even push an agenda of any kind," or even to "push" an agenda of any kind. This is where it's easy to tell Mr. Harris has never lived in the area and is allergic to research of any kind. All he has to do is visit the county's webpage and my website to find out what my agenda is. Number one, I had an agenda with the Commissioner, McCarrer, and Pinkerton, I had an agenda with Commissioners McCarrer and Pinkerton, we're doing a two-mil tax increase for two thousand and thirteen. My objective was to find ways to promote a tax increase to half their plan. Although no one wants to see tax increases, I was successful in keeping the increase to one mil. Number two, my agenda is to increase the amount of non-union county employees, this includes management contributions toward the healthcare premium. I'd like to double that amount from sixty-two dollars per month for an employee making fifty thousand a year to one-hundred-and-twenty-four a month. The other two Commissioners have not agreed to any increase at all. Instead of leading by example, they want to have the employees at Sunnyview, the ones that make least pay the most, the least pay the most for the healthcare, it's ridiculous. If, if you remember, I tried to get this instituted, ever since I've come to office, I tried to rectify healthcare more, even with the public-private sector. Number three, my agenda is to keep Sunnyview a county-owned facility, a safety net for our working, poor, and middle-class in Butler County. Sunnyview. Sunnyview budget was ruined by greed and entitlement and the unfunded two thousand and four pension grab. Does anyone from the private nursing homes have, receive a pension of seventy-five percent of their earnings plus Social Security? The answer is no, they do not, not a one. So unbeknownst to the elected officials in two thousand and four, made it retroactive for thirty years and made the arc at Sunnyview extremely odd. That's why we're losing money there. Okay? The Sunnyview residents and the employees did not do it, leadership did it. These actions came from greed and entitlement by our elected officials, not concerned about the taxpayers, the disabled, and our senior citizens. My resolve is to keep Sunnyview as a safety net with the county. Number four, my agenda to keep taxes low and services high by not financing a twenty-million-dollar project when it is not needed. The county can resolve the space problem by purchasing an existing building at one-quarter the cost or less. My goal is less debt and not more debt. I promote this constantly to deaf ears. All you have to do is check the county webpage, research it at your fingertips. My tax and spend colleagues besides me demand higher debt and higher taxes. I am not for it. That is my agenda. This county's pension fund is forty million dollars underfunded. We need to curb spending and stop increasing county's debt service. We need to decrease this county liability. Make no mistake about this, the new Gatsby rules, this is the county debt. The pensions are school debt, county debt. We have to be responsible for what's happened in the past. We are not that responsible. These are just five of my agenda concerns that takes me to office, and Harrison can't name or locate even one, even on the website, or he's just too lazy to look. All you have to do is check out the county website, my webpage, research it at his fingertips. Last but not least, Harrison writes, "It's unfortunate the county can't do much to sanction or remove Exteign from office." Now, Mr. Harrison wants to override the voter's choice. It appears that he wants to negate our state constitution to install a candidate of Republicans' choice through the Court of Common Leagues, or the majorities' hand-selected political cronies. This is not the United, this is the United States of America, not Egypt or Saudi Arabia. Our founding fathers created this system, and we lost many in the Civil War to preserve our union and have civil rights for all our citizens. Mr. Harrison, Bill McCarron, and Dale Pinkerton feel they are above our system and constantly are trying to undo what many of our fallen have sacrificed their lives for, freedom. And one of these freedoms is the electoral process. History is destined to repeat itself for those who are not students of it. Who's time, man? How much time do I have left?
You have one minute and twenty-nine seconds.
It appears to me that, just on another issue, it appears to me that the Butler Eagle management is outraged over Commissioners, the Commissioners' use of "lower than pond scum" to describe Bill McCarron's allegation that I harassed young male lifeguards. They were outraged and placed their view on the front page of the Butler Eagle, along with the editorial by Mr. Harrison. What the Eagle did not cover was me calling Eagle owner John Wise III two or three times about Ron Von Ecker at the Eagle calling me a rectum in public over and over. Now, he did not use the word "rectum." He was more descriptive. I've cleaned that up, okay? Now, if I called up John Wise and complained about this, there's two words, one starts with A and the end ends with H, or starts with H. Okay, this guy does this in public all the time. I asked John Wise for him not to do that, and he said that's just Ron being Ron. And then he chastises me in public. This guy is, the Eagles promoting this in public, an elected official, and John Wise says, "How do I know that? Because Mike Sloot was standing beside me, our county sheriff, when he did it twice. There's a county prominent attorney when Ron Von Ecker called me a rectum in public twice, right on the city street." Okay? Now, I think that the Butler Eagle are Class A hypocrites. That's what they're doing here. You'd call them up and ask them not to do something, and they're Class A hypocrites. I think, I think it's ridiculous and a political hack. Have a good day.
Bill? I'm going to use my report time today to talk about a very serious issue within our county and the counties in the United States. It is the heart-wrenching loss of life and stolen potential we are experiencing as a result of drug overdoses and suicides. You know that just in two thousand and thirteen so far, Butler County has twenty-two deaths from drug overdoses, as well as ten suicides. When I called the Corrigan's office just a week ago for those numbers, the drug overdose was at twenty. We are up two more in just a week. As a matter of fact, Pennsylvania ranks fourteenth nationally in drug overdose deaths. Folks, the education process must start now. I recently read an article written by Dalton County Commissioner George Hartman and their district attorney, Ed Marzico, regarding this issue. I feel that much of the information provided in the editorial is worth stating, because with knowledge comes power. Unfortunately, prescription drug abuse and heroin are especially prevalent right now. Teens are having what they call farm parties, where they scour their homes, medicine cabinets for drugs, and then put them into a communal bowl at a party, and then randomly pull out and take the pill. These kids have no idea what they're taking. Did you know that every nineteen minutes, someone dies from a prescription drug overdose in this nation? Prescription drugs claim four hundred times more lives than the number of lives lost with gunfire. The United States has six percent of the world's population, but consumes ninety percent of the world's opioids, which are prescription pain medications. We cannot stop the new horror from destroying families unless everyone is informed about it. This is about saving lives through awareness, education, intervention, and enforcement. The danger is not just the drug pushers down the street anymore, but it is the bottle in your medicine cabinet. Many heroin addicts are in our midst. The addict is not who you might think. The junkie is often a good teen from an outstanding family who was prescribed illegal drugs for a legitimate condition, and then suddenly was sucked into the deadly cyclone of drug addiction. Folks, we can't have a false sense of security. We need to wake up and face this problem before the next funeral. You know, parents often say to someone who died of drug overdose, "Did he die of legal drugs or illegal drugs?" In the end, really, it doesn't matter. Dead is dead. We have a murderer in our midst, and his or her weapon of choice is drugs. We need to protect our kids and stop this slaughter before another coffin lid closes. There are some simple things we can all do to begin combat this devastating problem. Just as people are looking, locking up their guns and gun cabinets, we need to start locking up those pill bottles in our medicine cabinets. By raising awareness, parents, grandparents, teachers, friends, and neighbors can spot the signs of drug abuse and connect the professionals with those who need help. Each year, the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA, holds two national collections in the spring and fall to help people get rid of unwanted and expired medications from their homes. This program is always free and anonymous, no questions asked. The next collection will be held on October twenty-sixth from ten to two at the following sites in Butler County, the State Police Barracks, Cranberry Township Police Department, and Saxonburg Police Department. Another program our county has is Butler County Against Heroin. They work with approximately twenty-eight hundred students yearly to promote anti-drug and alcohol education in seven schools through the Stand Tall Program. This program promotes a drug-free lifestyle for our junior and senior high school students. They recently had their first fundraiser dinner at the Chop Shop here on Main Street. Our county also uses drug abuse resistance education, commonly referred to as DARE, to keeping it real. This is an evidence-based drug prevention program offered in our schools by the Sheriff's Department. Can One Corprate offers a reality tour, which is an evening program offered several times a year. This program is a dramatization that follows the life and death of a teen on drugs. At Adatico Health is offering a program to schools called Too Good for Drugs, and is offered, and is also offering a life skills training program. If anyone would like any more information, all they have to do is contact Beth Newe, nephew, I'm sorry. She is the prevention specialist for our human service drugs and alcohol program. Beth can be reached at seven-two-four-two-eight-four-five-one-one-four. It's two-eight-four-five-one-one-four. Folks, we have a long way to go, but if we come together as a community to battle this problem, we can make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Well, once again, we have been subjected to Mr. Exteign's meaningless, mindless diatribes and parades. They're full of falsehoods, misconceptions, fabrications, and innuendos. He takes claim for keeping the taxes down to one mill this year. That's a lie. All three of us worked in that. He can claim part of the credit. Our budget director at that time, Billy O'Donnell, thought we would have to raise taxes two mills. But all three of us worked through the budget, and we found ways which we could lower the tax to one mill. He can't take full credit for that. He lies about me continually. Now, I said this before, somebody once said that if you cannot build your own house by tearing down your neighbors, and that's what he's been trying to do for the past two years. I did not spread rumors about him harassing lifeguards. The paper received calls, the newspaper received calls from parents who were unhappy. We received calls in my office from parents whose sons were applying for a lifeguard position. These parents were upset because Mr. Exteign was calling the references. There was never any insinuation that he was physically or mentally or any way harassing lifeguards. That is a complete lie and a complete fabrication. In the beginning, I used to get upset when Mr. Exteign said these things, but now I've learned to pity him. He has proven that he has a complete lack of interpersonal skills. He has a complete lack of inability to communicate and interact with other employees of the county and other people in the community. He will do anything to make himself look good and make Dale and I look bad. Lies are just part of it. His actions have not proven to accomplish anything for the county. He is completely ineffective as a county commissioner, and he will continue to be that way as long as he tries to build himself up by tearing me down and by tearing Dale down and by harassing other county employees verbally. And I'm not talking about physical harassment in any manner whatsoever, so don't start spreading that rumor, Jim. But he has verbally, he told me he didn't like me using the word terrorizing, so I'm saying he's harassing other employees. He says we should lead by example. Dale and I did. We haven't, we pledged not to take any raises during our term. He took the raise. He says he doesn't take healthcare. Well, the county pays for his deductible. He told us one time that his deductible, or his wife's deductible, the PIT, was thirty-five-hundred a year, but the county pays him twenty-four-hundred a year not to take it, and he also does not have one and a half percent taken out of his pay, which would be another twelve-hundred. So, the county's paying for his wife's deductible, so he gets his healthcare free. The rest of us, Dale and I, have to pay one and a half percent of our pay for ours. On a good note, on a bright note, Saturday was a farm tour. We toured three farms, the Furch Farm, the Jones Farm, and the Tealy Farm, and it was a tremendous success. The weather was beautiful. I had an email from Lorraine Tealy, I think it was on Monday. She said almost nine hundred people visited their farm, which is a wonderful experience for kids who live in the city and don't know where their food comes from, or how milk is produced, or anything else. These kids learn a lot, and there were a lot of kids in these farm tours. I would urge you, farming is a tremendous industry in our county. It's probably one of the largest, if not the largest, industry in terms of employees and the amount of produce that the farmers produce. So, next time you see a farmer, thank them and support our local farmers. There are farm markets, and it's always dangerous to name names, but the Kings have one, Kenny Metcalf has one out on Eagle Mill Road, Brinkles have one out on sixty-eight, and I'm sure there's many, many more. Support those farm markets. And there's also, we have a local dairy, Mark Burger's. Support Mark Burger's dairy because of, most of that is local milk. We also have some of our supermarkets in the city and in the county that buy their produce from these local producers. So, what behooves you when you go into a supermarket? Look, see where that food came from. If it came from Mexico, put it aside and buy what came from Butler County. Support our local industry. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Conference time with the media. Kayla?
I have one question for you, Commissioner McCarron. I can get all sides here. When Commissioner Exteign says that the minutes have been kept shorter so that you and Commissioner Pinkerton can cover things up, what's your response to that?
My response to that is, the things he says, do we want those in the minutes? Really don't. I mean, do you want in the, I don't want in the minutes that he tells me pond scum. That is certainly not appropriate to put in minutes, I don't think, and some of you might agree, but I think most of what he says is very inappropriate for minutes.
Mike, would you like to speak for them?
Yeah, I would just comment that the purpose of meeting minutes in any public body is not to provide a transcript of the proceedings. It is to accurately reflect the actions of the body, and our meeting minutes certainly do that and more. The meetings here are recorded by Commissioner Exteign. They are broadcast to Armstrong Cable recipients. They are available on demand. If you ask Armstrong Cable, they'll give you a DVD with the proceedings on it. So, I don't think there is any, our meetings are more open than any other county that I know of, frankly, and more easily accessed by county residents. So, I don't, with all due respect to the Commissioner, concur with his opinion that anything that the county is doing is being covered up or even hidden.
Well, to further answer your question, Kayla, since you asked me the question, the report time is really not part of the, wouldn't have to be part of the minutes at all, because as our solicitor just said, the purpose of minutes is to record the business of the county, and reports and comments from the public are not really part of the county's business.
Mr. Chairman?
I may also add a piece of information. As the person who oversees the production of the minutes, we do follow Robert's Rules of Order in how we produce our minutes, and under Robert's Rules, the guideline is for minutes for public speakers of any kind, that the individual's name and the topic of their comments be recorded in the minutes, and so that is what we follow.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
All right. Any more?
No other questions.
Tom?
Yes, thank you. When Commissioner brought up the pension fund, he was using a number for being underfunded, but I believe it's also, that also equates to, it's eighty percent funded?
We are eighty percent funded. We are behind, but we are less, our county is much, in much better shape than most of the counties in Pennsylvania. The state itself is, what, sixty percent underfunded in their pension fund. So, Butler County is moving up, every year we're moving up. We're making the arc payment each year that we're supposed to make, and one of these years we will be fully funded, I would assume.
Thank you. And Mike, can you address the Commissioner that's alleging there's a conflict for the county to use an attorney who is representing an elected official in private litigation? Can you address whether that would be a conflict?
Well, any conflict of interest would have to be analyzed on a case-by-case basis. So, it's impossible to make a generic statement. Attorney Lynn is one of the two firms who was appointed as special counsel to the county at the organizational meeting. I am not aware of any work that he- I am not aware of any work that he has done for the county since that appointment. I can tell you that since I came on in January, he has not done any work for the county, so there is no conflict analysis to even undertake.
Because he hasn't done any county business since that litigation began?
Since then, he has not done any. So, the mere fact that we could do business with any attorney in Butler or throughout the state, and, you know, the mere fact that we could engage an attorney does not create a conflict.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Tom. Meeting is adjourned.